Ready? Everybody's ready?
If you're ready.
Okay.
Ready.
I would like to welcome everyone to the June 28th Medfield Board of Selectmen's meeting. This is a meeting that will be held in hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person, and members of the public may attend in person, and a few have. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining on one of the links that's provided in the meeting agenda that you can find on the town website. Reminder, this meeting will be recorded, so for those people who are present in the build, in the room tonight, if you would make sure that you have the microphone, which I'm sure is probably right next to Bill's seat, which is our normal place for stationing at the start of our meetings. Again, the microphone is not for you to be heard in the room, it's for Medfield TV to pick up the audio channel, so just make sure you've identified yourself and have the microphone if you want to speak, if you're here, present. At this point, I'd like to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. All right, our first appointment of the evening is Director Public Works Maurice Goulet to request the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a Chapter 90 project request in the amount of $237,129 to resurface various roads off Harding Street with rubber chip seal. Those would be Evergreen, K-Mark, Stony Brook, Long Meadow, Spring Valley, and Woodfall.
And Surry Lane is, uh, Surry Run as well.
Surry Run?
Surry Run across the way. We weren't able to get that in last year, so that's part of that package as well.
Okay. So the only, are questions coming?
No, I quizzed Mo before the meeting, so saved everyone the time.
Pete, any questions or comments from Mo?
No.
So the only question I had, Mo, is I thought we had done the chip seal on either Long Meadow or Evergreen last year.
So, in previous years, we did have that subdivision on our pavement management schedule. When we had a major water main break on Long Meadow a few years back, the road needed to be rebuilt.
Okay.
And we didn't have time to do that last year, so we flip-flopped the other side of Harding Street. That was going to be for the next year, so we just put it up a year. So the Colonial Road area was done last year, and this year we're continuing to just finish up that side of Harding Street.
Okay, that was the only question I had.
Yep.
The question as presented.
Second? Yeah, you use one of those little cheap ones, is I move the question as presented.
Okay, I will second that.
You don't actually have to think about what you say, you just sort of do that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries three, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You takes care of that.
If you don't see, have a great fourth.
Thank you.
Let's see, the next question we had was, or next item we had, it's not really a question, but just, I guess, a general discussion about our special town meeting last week. If anyone has any comments, observations, or anything to say about it.
So I went up to the CAM event on Saturday and bumped into a variety of folks, and just the feedback's been overwhelming. Everyone's thrilled. And to what we've been saying for so many months, like, they kept thinking, well, it'd be cool, you know, when everything's cleaned up and the roads are redone and you see, you know, life up there again, that, uh, just awesome. So yeah, knocking wood, good feedback. I'm glad we had a great turnout, glad Quorum didn't become a controversial thing that felt real good there. What, 700 people? 700?
696 was the official final count.
More than we got in our annual town meeting, so it's good.
Yes.
Combined, both.
And I'm happy for Trinity. I actually was looking, when I, when, when you could tell the way the vote was going to go, I just looked right down at Abby and Jim, and they hugged it out, and I was like, you know, good for them.
Yep.
I thought it went very well, and I was surprised that it was basically unanimous as it was. I thought that the video equipment that we had was phenomenal. I found after halfway through, I just started watching the screen that was pointed at me instead of the people that were 30 feet away, because I could see the people on the screen so much better than the people that were 30 feet away. It reminded me of the last concert I went to at the Xfinity Center, I think it was called the Tweeter Center in those days, and I spent the time watching the screen and thinking, isn't this silly? I'm here at a live concert and I'm watching a TV screen, but it was, I could see it, and the people were that big.
Well, I was saying to Christine, what I liked about that was, at the annual town meeting, I had no clue who was speaking in the warrant committee, because we can't see down. So to have that video, so you can put a name and a face and kind of, it made, I mean, I love that. I hope we do that going forward, so that, and the sound, the first, the annual town meeting, I couldn't hear what was being said, it was being projected out, so whatever they did for the sound the second go-around was well worth it.
Yeah, I still had trouble with the sound with some speakers, but that just might have been me, but, you know, I thought it was very nicely done, Chris, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just echo, I think the meeting, it was a great meeting for any of us who've spent years on this project, bringing, seeing it come home, and seeing it come home as decisively as this one did, that was a particularly good feeling about it. And like, I think the two of you, I'm optimistic about where this project is going to go. I, I, I do think from everything I've heard about Trinity and everything I've seen from Trinity, they are a good choice for a developer to do what we want to see done up there in the right way. My prediction is that that will be recognized as one of the premier real estate developments, if not in the entire state of Massachusetts, because there are some nice places out in the Berkshires in eastern Massachusetts. You know, a place like that with the character that those units are going to have, surrounded by open space, the Charles River, a kayak launch, I have a hard time picturing how there would be too much of a nicer location to be, anywhere within driving distance of Metro West certainly, so, or downtown Boston, so I was, I was happy about that. Looking forward to what we see coming out of it.
There's a long road ahead, but yeah.
Yeah, still got a lot to do.
We crossed the first hurdle we had to cross.
Yep, get to work on the gun range here in this coming, coming year. Okay, any other comments from anyone else? Just chalk this up as a win and let, okay. The next item we had was to vote to approve a contract with Rona Curran's for clinical oversight and supervisory services to the employees of Medfield Outreach. This is a one-year contract from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023, at a rate of $100 an hour, and the total amount of time is 40 hours. Questions, comments?
So moved.
Are we going that fast?
I guess we are.
It's a beautiful night.
I'll second, I read it.
We can still talk about it, but I just didn't want to have to read the whole thing again, after Gus had read it.
Extension of prior year's contract.
It's kind of a backup support.
That's what I figured, yeah, so I'm good, I read it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed. Carries three, nothing. That one's done. Let's see, next item is a vote to authorize the Board of Health to sign the contract with the University of Massachusetts Chan Medical School to act as an intermediary for claims for vaccine administration from public clinics. This is a one-year period of performance with automatic one-year renewals. I don't know, Christine, do you have any, is anybody with comments on this at all?
No, I met with Brenda today, who's our public health nurse, Brenda Healy, and we discussed it. This is similar to the setup that we have in the fire department with the ambulance service with ComStar, so they will do some billing. So Brenda will start running her vaccine clinics, and we will be able to receive reimbursement for that.
Okay, and, and when I was going through it, I noticed that it, the way they do the claims, the payers, so we're okay with it not having that mass health element of it?
Brenda was fine with that. I know I also fielded a question regarding Medicare. I talked to Brenda, and I talked to Chief Carrico, who said that that's fairly standard since Medicare is very slow to pay. They will collect their money before we see our money for that.
Yeah, I, if I followed, the first time I read it, I got balled up on the words, and then I read it again this afternoon, and basically, it sounds like the Chan School is taking care of all, we have to submit the information that says we've done, that we've administered the vaccines, but it's the Chan School that handles all of the billing and processing and reimbursement, so when it comes to them, they pull back 10% that they keep, and they send the rest on to us. So I think the two important points I took from that is, A, the town is going to be more capable to directly provide vaccine, vaccinations of a number of different types, and I think that one amendment was actually the one that extended to COVID vaccines, but it's all, it's not just COVID, it's a number of them. And we actually get paid to do it, so I wouldn't exactly say it's a money-making operation, but it's not a money-costing operation, so we have good reason to be happy about that change.
And it will, it will also allow us to expand our services. In the past, we've only been able to do, like, for example, we were doing the flu vaccines, the state would only send us, you know, 10, 20, 30 vaccines, we were only able to do that. This will allow us to expand that program to many more people in town.
Okay.
I would move question four on the agenda, action items.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed. All right, that one's approved, three, nothing. The next item is a vote to authorize the Chair to sign the municipality statement of commitment for a shared services arrangement through the Charles River Public Health District. So this is just me that's signing it.
Yes, just authorizing the Chair. And a few hours ago, they authorized Steve Resch, who is the Board of Health Chair, to sign as well.
So this thing right now is a blank form.
We are checking both boxes.
Okay.
We'll fill out the form for you, yes. I actually have to make a change to the form. We just need to make sure that it has the Charles River Public Health District, and then it has Town of Medfield after it, and each district had to change that.
I can print that in here.
If you could print that, that would be perfect.
Town of Medfield.
Yep.
And then when I sign it, it's actually a completed form. If you want me to sign this unless you want to redo anything.
No, you can sign that one, and then we'll have Steve sign that when he comes in this week.
So I haven't been authorized to do that yet, so.
Details, details.
They have a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
We're in summer mode.
All right, that's approved, three, nothing. Put that aside and sign it at the end. Next, the annual board and committee appointments and reappointments per committee listings attached to the meeting agenda, so this is a partial set of all the reappointments we do, so the ones that are indicated as reappointments are the ones we're going to do tonight, the ones that are not, we will get to subsequently. I don't think you can just so move these, Pete, I think you're going to have to read these, kind of, we'll start with the ADA. For the most part, these are reappointments, there are a few appointments we can differentiate. We have two resignations that kind of came in with these, so I think we're accepting the resignations at the same time that we're reappointing everybody else, is kind of how that works.
Yes.
First item is the ADA Compliance Review Committee.
Good, if you want to, if you think it's non-controversial, read them all through and have one vote at the end.
Okay.
Appointments, or if there's any controversial, just hold them out as an exception.
If we're going to do that, then I'm going to suggest that we address the committees that we're planning to dissolve first, just to get them off the books, and then there's a couple that have resignations, maybe we can take some time on those, but then the ones that are reappointments, let me take you up on that, Mark. So the first committee that's proposed to be dissolved going forward from here is the Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee. This is the committee that did, I think, the legwork to get the rail trail in place, but it is the advisory committee, it's not the actual Bay Trail Rail.
Bay Colony Rail Trail.
Bay Colony Rail Trail Committee, it's the advisory committee. So we're, we're dissolving that one. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Good with that? Motion?
Oh, we need to, okay, I move that we dissolve the Bay Colony Rail Trail Advisory Committee.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Christian Donner's going to be very happy. He's been asking for you to dissolve them for the last four years, so he's going to be very happy.
We always have the right of recall, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Second item is the Board of Selectmen Name Change Committee. This, of course, is making the assumption that the committee would not like to think it through again and possibly change it to something yet again. All right. Discussion?
Nope.
Move to dissolve the Board of Selectmen Name Change Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay, that one's gone. Let's see, I think there's another one farther down here. Yes, the Medfield State Hospital Negotiating Committee, not to be confused with the Medfield State Hospital Mediating Committee. So this is the negotiating committee.
This is the negotiating committee that originally did the land disposition agreement for that.
So presumably, we're no longer negotiating the LDA, our LDA with the state.
So I remember that Steve Nolan was on that as well. Who's the fifth member, Bill?
Ken Richard.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. I move to dissolve the Medfield State Hospital Negotiating Committee consisting of John Harney, Bill Massaro, and Osler Peterson.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that one's proven. I think that was, let me see, just make sure, I think that was there, right? Okay. Mark, do we have to separate, there's reappointments and there's a few appointments. I think we, as I recall, we do the appointments separate from the reappointments, or does it not matter?
I don't think it makes any difference.
Okay. So there, the returning members of the following committees are reappointments, new ones are appointments. And I guess if you want, I'll re, I'll go through the, unless you want to, you want to read the names of the reappointments?
I don't, no.
So I will go down, I will go down the list.
Can we just discuss the ones that are an issue, or do we need to go through every name?
No, you've got to, you've got to get it from a, from a transparency standpoint. This issue was actually arisen with the.
No, I, I think what Pete is asking is, we don't need to discuss the people we're not reappointing. They're already on the committee, there's no action taken for those.
No, I'm actually asking whether we have to read all the names of all of our appointments where they're on the agenda.
Well, you could say like ADA first, the first one, ADA Compliance Review, there's two reappointments, and read the names.
Okay, do you want me to go through and read them?
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay. ADA Compliance Review Committee, reappoint Anne Thompson, Tina Cosentino.
For one, for one-year terms.
For a one-year term. Capital Budget Committee, reappoint Michael Marcucci, Sharon Tetrow, Nasser Ishmial, Megan Sullivan, Andrew Foster, no, I'm sorry, he's being appointed.
You can say appoint.
Okay, appointed. Michael LaFrancesca and Christine Terweiler are all being appointed for a one-year term. On the Collective Bargaining Committee, reappointing all Chief Michael Guerret, Michael Marcucci, Chief William Carrico, Michael Pastore, Christine Terweiler, Mark Fisher, Kathy Vandenberg Bloom. On the Committee to Study Memorials, reappointing all Jane Lomax, David Temple, Mark Bryson, Michelle Doucette, Ron Griffin, Paul Fascaldo, David Connors.
Excuse me, if I'm not, unless I'm incorrect, it appears they're all one-year reappointments or appointments or reappointments? So we just, on the record, note that.
Thank you.
They're all one-year either reappointments or new appointments, and so you won't have to keep saying that.
Thank you, thank you for straightening me out. You know, eventually we get into some longer terms, but we'll mention that when we get there.
Community Choice Aggregation.
Say again?
Community Choice.
Community Choice Aggregation. Reappoint Megan Sullivan, Robert Winogad, Gus Murby, and Nick Milano. Community Gardens Committee, reappoint Neil Sanders, Betty Sanders. Kingsbury Pond Committee, reappoint Richard Judge, Sharon Judge, George Dealey, Greg Testa, Ann Crock, Angela Matzorata Felice, and I apologize for stumbling on that, Rick Ebs, Christine Terweiler. Medfield Emergency Management Planning Committee, reappoint Chief William Carrico, Chief Michelle Guerret, Maurice Goulet, Dr. Jeffrey Marsden, Roberta Lynch, Christine Terweiler, Amy Collaran, Jamie Marsette.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, sorry. Andrew Kelleher, and appoint Brenda Healy. Medfield Energy Committee.
Yeah, not that one, skip that one.
We're going to skip that one. They're just all hanging on, I guess. Medfield State Hospital Building and Grounds Committee, so this is where my first question came. John Thompson is listed for reappointment, but he's not in town anymore, I understand.
I haven't heard that officially yet. He has not notified us that he's no longer living in town.
Just as a matter of reference, up at the Kingsbury Pond Committee, George Dealey's not here in town anymore, but I think he's.
There's a whole list of the people that are non-residents on all these committees.
Oh, I thought we had some sort of.
No, look, all the, all those people, look at this one here, the Chiefs all live out of town. Everybody's just.
Well, a lot of the, yes, the employees, a lot of the town employees are on committees, but I thought in general, we didn't appoint non-residents to, to town committees.
It's all of them, they spend our money.
That's right.
All right.
State Hospital.
Medfield State Hospital Building and Grounds Committee, John Thompson, these are all for reappointment, Chief Michael, Michelle Guerret, Chief William Carrico, Paul Hinckley, Maurice Goulet, Christine Terweiler, Robert Meaning. Medfield State Hospital Development Committee, nobody gets reappointed. Medfield State Hospital Mediation Committee, reappoint John Thompson, Anne Thompson, William Massaro. Medfield Outreach Advisory Committee, reappoint Molly Frankel, Kathleen Cahill, Michelle Manganello, Liz Sandeman, Kathleen Thompson, and Abby Bly.
As an associate.
Associate, thank you. And, and she's being appointed, everybody else is being reappointed, Kate Thomas Flanagan is the last one. Medfield Wildlife Committee, Frank Perry, John Newell. Memorial Day Committee, Mark Bryson, who is our Veteran Service Officer, Chief Michael, Michelle Guerret, Chief William Carrico, Anne Thompson, Gustav Murby, Michelle Doucette, Ronald Griffin, Jerry Kazansian, Frank Iafolo, Brittany Franklin. And she's being appointed, ex officio, non-voting. All the others are being reappointed, sorry?
You're good, you got it.
Safety Committee, reappoint Chief Michelle Guerret, Maurice Goulet, Christine Terweiler, Steve Caskey, Craig McGarry. And this was another area where I had a question, because Karen Schneider wanted to be on the Safety Committee, as did Gabby Harrison.
So we just advertised that we will be accepting members as part of the board and committee policy, that we'll need to advertise it, so I know we've gotten their letters of interest, but we haven't advertised it yet.
Okay.
So it's on the, it's on the website now, being advertised.
Okay.
And then when do we act on that?
Uh, we, it has to be advertised for two weeks.
Okay.
So we'll put it on the, on July 12th.
Okay.
Transfer Station and Recycling Committee, reappoint Nancy Irwin, Barbara Meyer, Andrea Costello, Cheryl Dunle, Annette Wells, Jacqueline Alfred, Chris Carlin, Kimberly Schubert, Donna Knott, Maurice Goulet, Robert Kennedy, and Christine Terweiler. And then do we want to keep going? Medfield Affordable Housing?
Those are the one-year ones, so if you want to, we could just vote on those when it starts getting a little.
Okay. Move to appoint all of those people to the one-year terms.
Do I motion, I sent the motion in, because he read it, or do you?
Could you ask him to read it again?
A feisty move to me.
I'll read it again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.
Opposed, okay, those, those all carry. Then we'll start with the ones that have the green highlights.
Okay, so this is the Affordable Housing Trust, two-year terms, and we're reappointing the following members, Michael Marcucci, Newton Thompson, and Joseph Hunt.
And that, and just so I understand the listing here, so we have Greg Sanamerski, who's submitted his resignation. He's actually going to be resigned, he'll actually be off the committee as of June 30th, given that we're not reappointing him, so.
Correct.
You could be proactive and accept his resignation as part of this if you want to.
Didn't we do that already?
Sure, happy to, you want to just do that one here, just?
That's fine, and we've advertised it so that we're seeking another member as well.
So maybe we just approve that one and accept the resignation of Greg Sanamerski.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed, okay, so that one's done.
Board of Health, the people that are up for appointment are Steve Resch, reappointment for a three-year term. We're accepting the resignation of Manat Chi Chivukula, who is accepting a position in the State Department and is going somewhere exotic, I don't remember exactly where it is, but.
Poland.
Poland? She's learning Polish, that's right, she's learning Polish now. And she sent us a very nice picture of her family, so, good luck to her. And Jeff Kane, Associate, reappoint for a one-year term.
Second, motion, that, so.
Okay, move the Board of Health.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed, okay, that one's done. Board of Water and Sewer.
Board of Water and Sewer, we are voting a three-year term for Christine Carpenter and a one-year reappointment term for David Puschi as an associate. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, good.
Conservation Committee, we're appointing, reappointing for a three-year term Mary McCarthy and Catherine Scott. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye. Council on Aging, we are reappointing for a three-year term Annette Wells and Laurel Scotty, who's here in the room, to accept her appointment.
You look surprised.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay, she didn't say no, that's good.
Yeah, we got it through before she could.
Her original appointment was only filling me until the next appointment. No, you're good.
Historic District Commission, reappointment for a three-year term is Bradley Phipps, and it doesn't say how long John Mayora.
I don't think that's being reappointed.
He's not being reappointed.
Oh.
So he's not being reappointed?
Correct.
So it'll be a vacancy.
So moved then for Bradley Phipps.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed, okay, those are done.
Historical Commission.
Don't want to hold on that?
I'm sorry, what?
Not the Stark Commission, that's not listed there. OPEB is the next one that's got reappointments.
Oh, I see, yeah, there's nothing going on. OPEB Trust, we're reappointing for one-year terms the following, Georgia Kalivas, Michael Pastore, Gustav Murby, appointing Andrew Foster, and reappointing Christine Terweiler, one-year term, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye.
Opposed, next.
Permanent Building, Permanent Planning and Building Committee, and we're reappointing Timothy Bonfati for a three-year term, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed, done.
Planning Board, Associate Members Blake McDermott and Jamie Sullivan for a one-year term, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Good.
Zoning Board of Appeals, appointing for a three-year term Michael Witchner, and appointing for one-year terms as associates Jared Spinelli, Charles Peck, and Jared Gustafson. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Okay, those are done. Next, we have Vote to Establish an Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee Seek Members and Review Committee Charter. Any questions or comments on the draft of the Open Space Recreation Planning Committee?
This is a follow-up for the discussion we had a few weeks ago, where it was like a $25,000 grant.
That's my question, this is actually the committee, this isn't.
This is the committee, yep.
So the contract would be overseen by this committee, or?
Well, you would still vote to sign the contract.
Right.
It comes under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, but this, we need to just get the committee started first.
Okay. Do you have any other?
Did I miss the contract? Was it in?
We, we haven't awarded a contract, this is just the charter for the committee.
Okay.
All right, we had a discuss, I guess we haven't signed the contract, but we.
No, because we talked about whether or not it would be a full contract, or there'd be multiple different smaller contracts working with existing staff.
Okay.
So that contract, or that $25,000, was directed toward correcting the deficiencies in our current plan as, based on the state's feedback, which is, I guess, what we have to do in order to get past November being the expiration date of the current plan.
Yes, and it's also updating the plan for the next phase. We don't have an approved plan, this one's expiring, so we're going to have a new plan This one's expiring, so we're going to have a new plan as well.
When you say updating, this is, now we're going back to the question I asked you before, because this plan was dated June, April of 2020 or something, and they're supposed to be good for seven years. So what I understood was this was redone like two years ago, I think, or less than two years ago. There were a set of deficiencies that the, it looked like a good plan to me. I really actually liked it, but there were a set of specific deficiencies that the state had called out that we were using that $25,000 to address.
It's a little bit of both.
Right.
The plan expired many years before that, but it took that many years for the committee to submit it.
Six years.
So despite, regardless of all of that, the plan expires November of '22, and we need a new one. But we have that as the template, the background, the foundation for which to build upon for the next submission. So we'll take all that feedback from the state, make sure it's all addressed, and the revision and update that we send in as our new plan in the, you know, coming months.
So we're calling it an update so that we can put the new dates on it, but we do think it's a very good base plan that we can use a lot of that information.
It has information in it that's more current than seven years ago. It's not like a seven-year-old plan that's just, it's got the.
They had taken so long to work on it that they were continually updating the information as they were going as well, which was great.
So then my question is, the current old plan, which isn't really all that old, but it was because it took us a long time to submit it, that expires in November, no matter what we do, this committee has got something due in June of 2023, I think it is, June 30th or something like that. So basically, I guess what I'm asking about is we are saying, yes, our plan will expire in November. This committee, we're not asking to get a complete plan pulled together for November. We're actually asking them to have it pulled together by next summer. And the reason that's a good thing is it took us like five years to actually finish the last plan. This one might take us an extra five to seven months to get it to something that would be good for another six and a half years, if they like it.
And the reason why we'd really like to move it forward and why it's coming up this evening is we'd like to be eligible to apply for some of the park grants to help with Hinckley helpers.
All right.
I'm good.
Pete, any questions or comments?
Is this committee under the Conservation Commission?
No, it would be under the Board of Selectmen, and then we put representatives from all of the different ones.
I believe there was a Conservation Commission member who was pretty much working on his own to do this previously.
Correct. There's representations from all of it, but the Board of Selectmen always appoints the committee.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So then the question I had was, so now I understand the dates. That was one of the questions. But the other question I had, it had to do with partly what was worded here in the summary. It talks about looking at open space and recreation, and it actually talks about, from an open space standpoint, actually also looking at non-public property that nonetheless, you know, recognizing the connections, which is a good thing. The question I had is whether we should expand the scope of this to be open space, recreation, and environmental. And where I'm coming from on that, sometimes people think of open space as just this stuff we have that we aren't going to develop, and it's not really, you're not looking at it from an environmental wildlife card or, you know, a true environmental perspective. You're just looking at it as land that's locked up that's not going to be developed. Recreation is a subset of that, but it occurred to me, and it was really the connections, when it talked about thinking through connections with private property, year, you know, for years, I belonged to the Nature Conservancy, and the one thing that was unique about that environmental organization is rather than having, you know, trying to save a particular species or trying to save a particular piece of land, their whole perspective was to take a look at the total ecosystem, because they were saying you could have preserved chunks of land, but if the animals that live on them can't get from this preserved chunk to that preserved chunk, you're going to wind up destroying the wildlife anyway because they have no way to actually connect with other parts of the population. They have no way to move where they need to move. So the only question I had is whether it would be worth expanding the scope of this to open space, recreation, and environmental, environmental management, I guess is what we would call.
Sure.
It's not really intended to add a lot to what they would do if they're doing open space, including the non-public connections from one piece of open space to the next. It's not asking, actually asking for a whole lot more, other than maybe if we got the right people there, they would also be able to look at that from an ecosystem standpoint, not just look at it as can the Norfolk Hunt Club get from here to there, but actually, you know, where the beavers migrate to and stuff like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that you also, along with the environmental issues, you also have climate change issues and flood storage and all the rest of that stuff, so you might want to make a little bit broader than just the animals or.
Yeah, the only thing is, because we have another group that's doing that, I don't want to, that could be like a black hole.
We can at least tie in with each other, though. I mean, it's.
Yeah, but certainly I'd be a piece of it if we're going to destroy natural areas because we're not taking care of them.
We need to start planting trees that are currently in North Carolina, apparently.
We have red-bellied woodpeckers, and they used to be up here. Found my first scarlet tanager this morning in our mulberry tree. That's cool.
There's so many things I could say to that, but I'm not even going to go there.
I wasn't in the mulberry tree. It was the birdie. I haven't seen the cedar waxwings yet. All right, let's see. What do we need to do on this then? Simply?
Vote to establish.
Vote to establish it?
Yes, and then we'll start advertising that we're seeking members, and we'll talk to the different committees about their appointments to it.
I would vote to establish the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee as set forth in the agenda.
Specify a number? Do you want to do that? Do you want to leave that open?
Membership says there's seven.
It's in the charter.
Planning Board Member, Conservation Commission Member, Parks and Recreation Commission Member, and then four Members-at-Large. Sounds all right.
I can second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that's approved. Three to nothing.
So there is a question from Chris Potts. Did you see that?
No, I'm sorry. I got out of it.
I just caught it on your screen, actually. I saw the red. I'm like, oh, there's a question. I missed it.
Good thing you're watching, Eileen.
That's what we're here for.
Chris, since my understanding.
It's the, we dissolved the negotiating committee, which was the original committee when we bought the property from the Commonwealth.
But Todd's committee still exists today.
Yes, if not.
So, Chris, it was the Town's LDA with the state, when we bought the state hospital property, is the committee that we just dissolved. It's not the Town's LDA with Trinity, the Development Committee. I can assure you, any reports of its demise are greatly exaggerated. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow night, so the Development Committee is still busy anticipating what they're going to need to do, or taking a look at what they're going to need to do in the coming year.
2014 purchases.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Actually, I should have left that open. There's actually two. Thanks, okay. Great. Okay, let's see. Next item is a vote to approve a contract with McKechnie Associates Incorporated for lawn mowing services at the Medfield State Hospital. Period of performance is July 2022 to November 2022, and the total amount is $24,500. Comments, questions?
Well, did you just put the appendix of the attachment? I'm like, I put a note. I have no idea what I'm looking at, what numbers. So I just now, wait a minute, it's there. You just look it in there.
I uploaded the wrong document into the packet, so.
That was going to be my question.
My mistake.
Sorry, we want to make sure you're reading it.
I am on my toes tonight.
It's a little test.
It's okay.
Just as a side comment, seeing as Chris Potts is here on this meeting, but I actually downloaded my packet from the Medfield Insider, and I had access to it when I went to the Town website yesterday. It wasn't up yet, so I don't know how Chris does that, but.
Well, no, it was, it's there. It's in two different places.
Okay, well, I.
So you could get it off the agenda or off the case.
Well, I have to give a tip of the hat to Chris because she obviously goes to the more reliable place.
All right, so when I, so what McKechnie would be doing is two cuts in July, so seven grand holes to be held. They did a great job for the car show. They got it ready to go nicely. So, yeah, no, that's fantastic.
Yep.
And then, and then will they, then there'll be a different contract for the leaf cleanup and all that?
Yes.
Okay. They did a good job with that, too, this year.
Yep.
Pete, comments?
Just as a point of interest for the residents, each cut at the Medfield State Hospital is $3,500.
And it's the same price as last year, thanks to a competitive process this year, and even despite everything going on with gas prices and everything, that we were able to hold steady on the line, which I was surprised by when we got the prices back in.
It's the only mowing contract I've ever seen that has a map.
We get a lot of questions.
She must have a large underground gas storage tank.
I don't, yeah, hopefully not.
I would move to approve the contract with McKechnie Associates for lawn mowing services at the Medfield State Hospital.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that's good. Let's see. And the final item of the listing here, vote to appro, oh, no, that's.
No, we're going to hold number eight. Hold that one.
There's nothing we need to be worried about.
We just got them today, and we have some work to do before we can present them to you, unfortunately.
Okay, no citizen comment?
No.
No citizen, yeah, we have citizen comment. That's like the first time in six months. Yes, this is great. Hold on.
Ian Potts, and I just, I'm Green Street. I'm just curious to know, where is the town, where are we right now? Maybe I've missed something in regard to the lawsuit, to the town of the senior housing that proposed on Ice House Road. I haven't heard anything about it.
It's been dismissed.
Curious to know where we stand.
It's been dismissed. The lawsuit has been dismissed, and I'm dealing with the developer about closing and going forward.
I can tell you from the standpoint of the people who were plaintiffs that, well, I can tell you why I opted to dismiss my suit, which was that I didn't think it would make any difference in the end. So that I think the town still did it inappropriately and wrongly, but I didn't want to litigate it, because I didn't think it would make any difference if it was done. What you get from the suit is to get it to do over again, and I thought the town would do it the same again.
So I can ask you this now?
Yes.
Yeah, I had announced it at the senior cookout the other night, and then we thought we'd have some paperwork that we could be signing, but you must be working with Bob right now. That's why we're not signing.
We're waiting, basically, for the lending, the lender's attorney to do or complete his due diligence.
Okay. Oh, no. I'm glad you brought that up.
The other comments? Do we have any? Let's see, any here? Okay. Let's see, the consent agenda, we have a common victor's license for calendar year 2022 for the new owners of Blue Moon Bagel.
Is that, is there paperwork to look at for that, or how's that go?
No, that's just their common victor's license.
So are they changing ownership?
Yes.
So is it Dan Friedman that has owned it all these years?
Yes.
He's selling?
He's retiring, yes.
Okay, so keeping it in the family?
No.
No? Wow.
He's staying, he and Linda are staying on for the foreseeable future to make the transition.
All right, so we won't notice a thing. It's going to be a blind transition. It'll be just as good, right?
That's what I was informed. Everything would remain the same.
Oh, good. Okay.
Or else it'll be a Chipotle's, but that's only a deal.
You're a funny guy, aren't you?
That won't get anybody mad.
Words out of my mouth.
All right.
I would move to award a common victor's license for calendar year 2022 for the new owners of the Blue Moon Bagel.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, approved.
That's funny.
Let's see, meeting minutes. We have May 10th, 2022, May 24th, 2022, June 7th, 2022.
I've got all my comments in, so I'm good.
Okay, and I.
I put my comments into.
And so did I, for, just to make the point, the, most of them were editorial or, you know, of no major consequence. The only one that I kind of thought was a little bit substantive was in, on the May 10th one. I put in a paragraph, this was the charging station discussion that we had, in the course, and I don't know that I put the paragraph exactly where it belongs relative to the video, so I put paragraph, but I also put a comment and said, not sure if this is exactly where this discussion went in the actual meeting, so there's a little bit of checking. But the only issue was that we'd had, I wanted the minutes to reflect that there had been a discussion about whether or not to charge for the electricity, that the upshot of that discussion by the end of it, that was that we had talked about probably charging it, charging for it, but not charging like market rates, just charging to cover our costs. That's not a decision. That was just sort of where that conversation wound up. And then the main operative thing of that was that if there were any decisions that need to be made about the charging station equipment itself, that equipment needed to come with the software and associated equipment that would allow us to charge. And then I think it was maybe in the notes that said, I think it might have been Penny Connor suggested that we could talk about the charging, the actual, make charging decisions later, which I'm totally agree with. So the, what was reported there was correct, but I didn't think it said enough about our preliminary discussions about charging.
That's the only thing I commented on any of the minutes, is that there were a couple of them where we had pretty lengthy discussion, and it wasn't really called out, and I wasn't sure to what level of detail do we get into doing that, knowing that there's a YouTube someone can view.
Right.
But one of them I did, I actually did add, we had a lengthy discussion, just so that people don't think we just, like, we just did tonight, something's really short.
So the AG's rule of thumb is somebody reading the minutes should be able to get a sense of what took place at the meeting. So frankly, a mere statement that a lengthy conversation occurred is probably not appropriate. You at least have to touch on the high points.
Well, I think that is discussed. There are the high points there. It's just not the full transcript of the conversation, and then you can just click on the YouTube video if you want to see the whole thing.
Right.
Okay.
And there's been a couple of sets of meeting minutes where I've done exactly what I did here, mainly because I felt like picturing somebody just looking at the minutes without reviewing the video would look at that and not realize something had been discussed. There have been probably three occasions where I've basically added something in, not to try to do a transcript, but just to point out that, no, this was an issue that came up and that we did discuss, and we got this far.
Well, like a silly thing, again, you can tell me whether I'm being too detailed, like, so, I forget what night it was, where we approved Andrew Foster. Well, in the meeting, they had it at the very, very end, called out, we did it, but it was like the first thing we did that night.
Yeah, I almost counted on it.
So I just called out that, that, I just kinda reordered that, because there were a couple of them that night, we moved things around, so if you're just looking at it from a timely standpoint, the video would not line up with what we did. Well, I should say, the, the meeting minutes wouldn't line up with the video, but I called out a couple of things, cause I usually go back and watch them and then I read the minutes and then I kind of.
Well, I almost counted on the, cause I knew Andrew, we did, we put them at the front and then I just kinda let it go, but.
So. Mr. Chairman. So just to put it in context, because there were proposals floating around to dis, in the legislation may still be to dispense with the requirement of minutes in light of technology being where it is. And the pushback has been that, uh, groups of interest groups, including municipal attorneys, don't wanna sit and have to watch through a whole tape or whatever, perhaps for hours, they wanna be able to quickly go through minutes, get to the issue that they're concerned about and then maybe follow up with the tape once they've identified what or what was not said in the minutes. So there's, there's a sense out there that minutes still serve a valuable purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I get that, cause if you're looking for something, it can be, uh, it can be a painful process, especially if it's a topic that's been discussed, you know, three or four or five different meetings, but the one you're really looking for is the one that talks about this piece of it. Without the minutes, it can be pretty tough to find it. Okay, we have a motion to accept those minutes.
Approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, okay, they're approved three to nothing. And I did learn this past week that, at first I thought Brittany was just scaling back on how many minutes she threw at us for each meeting, but in fact, we are making headway to where we actually very are, at the point where we only need to do a couple of sets of minutes for each one of our meetings to solely close the gap, so.
We're getting there.
Okay, uh, town administrator update.
I have a few things for you, um, we started working this week with Bill Solomon, who is our special counsel, uh, to do our informal negotiations as our Verizon and our Comcast cable contracts expire. So we just started working with him. Um, I met with Russ Halasy today and the Medfield Day hours have changed this year, so they wanna make sure that you are aware of that. So instead of nine to three, it will be 10 to four. And then, this last one is interesting, we've had a couple of complaints this week, um, about kayakers who are leaving their kayaks chained, chained to trees at the Medfield State Hospital kayak launch, at the boat launch. So we're asking everybody, if you have a kayak up there, you may wanna get it removed, DCAM is going to put notices on all of them and I assume they mean stickers, giving you a certain amount of time to remove them from the property before they remove them. So we're just asking kindly if anybody has a kayak up there that you take them in and take them out every night with you, uh, they can't be stored on the property.
Interesting. Say that again, Phil?
It's the Charles River Water Association, I'm not thrilled about that either, that was part of our negotiations when the canoe launch, kayak launch was built.
You can use it, but don't leave your stuff there, okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, I remember, I think it was last year I saw a boat, it was kind of an old rig, although it wasn't a kayak, but it was tied or chained to a cable to the tree. I thought it was kinda weird, but it didn't look like they had used it for a while.
So, anybody who has one up there who didn't know that those were the rules, we'd just like to have you remove them before, uh, DCAM has them removed for you. And that's it this evening.
That's it, okay. Uh, our next meeting dates are July 12th, two weeks from today, August 2nd, and then August 30th, so we have a, we've had a schedule for months or for the summer months here.
Yeah, cause Chris had.
As long as no one out there finds some other way to create mischief that involves the board of selectmen, you should be okay this summer.
And I know Chris had it as July 5th in the insider, but I think we had talked about that in one of our meetings.
Yeah, but one of our dates that we had talked about, we're gonna go to the 12th.
Okay, good.
Let's see, selectman reports, Eileen.
All right, um, so I know I might have shared with you, but now that we're here for the meeting, I made it to the Council on Agent Cookout last Wednesday night, Thursday night, what, um, I've, what, what? When night was that, I don't even know, now that I'm trying to think, uh, I had a busy week last week, but it was awesome, anyways, Wednesday night. What was really nice, as a total surprise, Denise Carlick was there, she awarded Roberta Lynch the Unsung Hero Award, which was fantastic, something that they, that, um, all the other people that received it, which is a very select few. Denise had one person in her entire district for the year that she could select, she selected Denise, excuse me Denise, she selected Roberta. Um, Roberta being Roberta, um, dedicated to being there at the cookout, could have gone to the state house earlier in the day and received it there. She stayed, which, which I thought though was more touching, is that she received the award in front of everyone there, it was really moving, well deserved, awesome, awesome, um, accolades for her, so that was fun. And it was just fun, just to see, they had a nice turnout, um, Mike LaFrancesca was on the, on the grill cooking the cheeseburgers, there were some young kids delivering the food, so, I'm trying to recruit people, my, like, a couple of years younger to go to the next one on July 20th, so. But if you've never, I'm sure you guys have been there, it's a nice setup, um, it's good, and I think Roberta said the July 20th one, there's gonna be a 15-piece band or something, it's gonna be, um, quite lively, so.
Did you happen to notice whether the ghost of Mike Sullivan was looking over LaFrancesca's shoulder as he was grilling?
If there's an inside joke there, I'm missing that one.
He would have been there doing that if he were still with us.
Oh, all right, oh, nice. And then, uh, as I said, town meeting, we all went to that, that was good, um, the CAM event this past weekend was really nice, considering how hot it was, they had a nice turnout, they had a lot of people just underneath all the trees. But really good music and, uh, I know they're expecting some more umbrellas and some other things, so as these warmer Saturdays come about, uh, people can be under the shade. And then, um, like you guys, I made it to the nice retirement lunch for Joy this past Friday, which was nice, very happy for her. And I think that's, did, cause we, we talked about going to the Boy Scout, excuse me, the Eagle Scout ceremony at one of our previous meetings, yes?
I think we did.
We did, okay, was, I know we didn't meet last week, did we technically get this stuff, I couldn't remember, you couldn't remember what went on between those two weeks, so I'm good, thank you.
So the first thing that I did was go to the car show, uh, we had a, an email, uh, which is, this year I didn't see all the cars that I used to own like I did the other years, which always entranced me, although someone was selling a Volvo, like the one that I had from the 60s for 15,000 that I paid 500 for, so, I could, should have kept it. We had an, we all had an email, uh, today from Ben Keating about the intersection where Hatterstale comes out on 109 because of the Chipotle. Uh, he was asking for, uh, a better intersection, a four-way intersection there with a traffic light. I, I told him that, uh, I had been concerned about that area ever since I wrote the ZBA decision for the, what's now the car wash, um, convenience store and gas station on the other side of the entrance to 266, because there's so many curb cuts along there that it's problematic, but it, I think, I think that he's got a good point, I hope that somehow that that gets, it's, I asked sir to send it along to the planning board and the ZBA, who are the people that I think are doing the hearings on it. I got a chance this morning to, uh, see the new exhibit at the Peak House and it is spectacular, they have just done a wonderful job. They invited members of the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund Committee to come and have a look and see what they had done with the money that they had been granted. And, uh, they're apparently gonna start their publicity about it tomorrow, but I encourage everybody to go and take a look at it, cause it, it, we have like a museum now here in town, it looks really great, first rate. I've got office hours coming up on Friday and, um, and since Eve raised the issue of Hinckley South, I'll just mention, um, why I sued the town over Hinckley South. First of all, um, I think it was a mistake that the town didn't come to the neighborhood and talk to them about it before there was a, a plan that was already set in stone. So that by the time the neighborhood saw the plan, it was too late to change the plan. What the neighbors were asking for was 150 feet of separation between the houses that are on acre lots and the, and the high-density houses that are five units to an acre next door. The only reason that the five unit to the acre high-density housing can be there is because the town was using 40B, the Affordable Housing Statute that we get mad at the developers for using against us. In this instance, the town was using it against our neighborhood basically and saying, even though our town zoning is one, one house per acre, we're gonna put in five units per acre in this, in this zone. And then, what we found out as the process went along was that the town owned the project, owned the land and was asking to have it approved. And the people that were approving it were the town's ZBA, so that there was nobody on the, on the resident's side of the, of the equation. We asked to have the water studied and we were told by the town's peer review, oh, we can't study the water because the developer didn't study the water. If I was a developer and that was the rule, I wouldn't study anything, because if, if I don't study it, then the town can't peer review me, so. So we disagreed with that and that's why we ended up suing the town. The, the remedy if you sue is that it just gets undone and has to be redone, and so we just decided that it was gonna get redone in the same way so that we wouldn't bother them with the suit, so. That's the explanation on that. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, I had sent an email to, uh, Jess Riley and asked her what was going on with the, uh, the school building. And she told me that, uh, that they were trying to respond to an email from, from you, Gus. And so that I didn't know about that email. I got to see it this week, cause Chris Potts put it in her, uh, Medfield Insider. But I guess what I would suggest going forward is that rather than you were using your position as the chair of the Board of Selectmen to prevent something from being discussed at the board, you were putting a barrier up. I would think it would be better if you came to Eileen and to me and we had a discussion about that as the board. Well, let me just finish, yeah, let me finish. I think it would be better going in the future if you brought the issue to the, to the full board and then the full board made the decision rather than you just making that as the, as the prerogative of the chair.
I made no decision.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I made no decision.
Well, you made a decision not to put it on the agenda is what your email said.
I, I got, I was directly contacted by the school committee about, it's getting time to start the school, open up the school building committee. I directed the school committee to the provisions of the bylaw revision and I said, that's great, I'd be delighted to bring it up before the school, the Board of Selectmen as soon as the school committee submits the application specified in the bylaw revision, that is the first step in the bylaw revision. As soon as that's there, I made it clear, I'm not trying to slow anything down, I'm not trying to be bureaucratic.
All right, I didn't realize that that was.
Bylaw revision that specifies, this is the first step, the first step is in your court. Once you get it to us, I will immediately put it on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen and I would anticipate that we will do all in our power to expedite the formation of the building, of the building committee.
All right, that's, that's my bad then, I didn't realize that that was the first step in the process, so, thank you, that's it.
And just, you know, and then to be clear, once we do that, then we have four different groups that will designate appointees to that building committee and at that point, the Board of Selectmen is out of the process until we get to the, at this stage, until we get to approval points down the road unless the MSBA invites us into the program, at which time, one of us would become a representative on that building. But you always bring up issues like that, Pete, I, I think in this particular case, I tried to handle it the right way, but, uh, I don't object to the fact that you raised the question.
Yeah, no, I just, I wasn't aware of your email and all of a sudden I heard about your email and I thought that you were laterally taking actions without the board, so.
That was not my intent and, uh, I will gladly have anybody, either of you chase after me if you ever think I'm taking an action that the board needs to take instead of me individually, cause in the past I have gone after other members of this board, for that very offense, so, that's a hot button for me actually. Okay, uh, anything else, Pete?
No, no, thank you.
I got a bunch of stuff, um, I attended the warrant committee meeting prior to the special town meeting, a meeting was on, uh, 16th of June to discuss the Trinity proposal. That, uh, going into it a week earlier, it sounded like the warrant committee wanted me to be there to answer some questions, but actually by the time I got there, I think the warrant committee had already convinced itself that they were pretty happy with the project. So that was kind of a, one of those fun meetings to just kinda be there and have good conversations and everything's great. I dropped in at the end of the Trinity Open House, two Saturdays ago before the special town meeting to kinda see how that went, I think you were there far longer than I was. But it was partially just to see how the open house went, which was very good at the state hospital and also had some sense of how the CAM. Am I talking too long or is it?
It's supposed to be our drum roll.
Okay, um, I also was just kinda curious to see how the CAM event was kicking off, which was pretty early, so people weren't there that, there. Then certainly the special town meeting was one of those things, you work hard to get something through and it is, it's refreshing to see, but, a, a plan or an idea widely embraced by the town. Every once in a while you feel, you know, like collectively we all did something right.
The town can't come together.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yes. There was a community choice aggregation Zoom call on the 20th, the day after the special town meeting. The, uh, the process that the committee's going through now is that the town has to put together a plan for this community choice aggregation. We've all seen the draft of that plan several months ago and it was, it was put out to the public. They, the committee's planning to have their updated revision for that plan ready for the, our meeting on the 12th of July to ask the Selectmen to review it. And that will then open the public comment period that will go for the balance of the month of July, uh, after which it will then get submitted to the DPU. So it's, it's, it's a weird thing that the state wants you to approve at the town level, to approve your plan and then you submit it and then they come back in with comments. So that in a Western way, I guess they wanna sort of waste the time of Selectmen rather than waste their time, so that process, that DPU re, DPU review process, uh, at the start of this effort, it's not like it could be like a, a year, for no good, no good reason other than it just takes a year. They, apparently the state has been trying to accelerate some of that, so it's likely that some of this might get turned around a little faster.
Who will come in and present to us on the 12th?
It probably would be either Bob Lindegrad or Megan Sullivan.
Okay.
We might, we might have Pat Roach on Zoom, I would guess. I don't think that, because we've already seen the draft, this is not a drastically different thing, but there are some specific changes, so I think they'll be able to highlight what those changes are and they'll have access to the document. You get that about my?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Next, uh, also went to Joy's retirement lunch on the 23rd, that was fun to come to, sorry to see Joy retiring, but happy to see that Joy's retiring because she's happy that she's retired.
Exactly.
Next, tomorrow night, there's a, uh, MSH Development Committee meeting where we're gonna kinda take stock of, now that we've gotten past the special town meeting, there are things that are gonna be coming up in the coming year during the permitting process that the other members of the development committee will be far more tuned in than I am. One of the things that I think we'll have to get to work on sooner rather than later is the process for resolving the bed range issue, because we should be taking care, taking advantage of this coming year to get that conservative Trinity off the table and taken care of. We have a 12 to 18 month period to try to work that through, so I'm hoping we can do that. Let's see, and the last thing I have, and I have copies of this for you two. This is informational at this point, but we've, we've had an ongoing, throw that one down to Christine, happened to be on Facebook this morning, you can throw that to me, probably should go to Mark or. It may, I can, I can send you an electronic version of this if you wanna put it into an information pack or something like that. It happened to just be on Facebook this morning, Concerned Citizens, somebody came on and said, we've had yet another incident of a dog, of a dog alteration, altercation at the state hospital. That, as you can see, was turned into a rather lengthy thread, uh, this, this came in on the 23rd of June. So I'm sharing it with you because we've, we're kind of in this extended discussion around dog control. This is, you know, the, the side where people are having some problems. I would make a general comment about this particular incident, the lady who posted it said that her dog had its tail bit by a pit bull mix that was off-leash, owned by a woman who I think had two other dogs, one was a, uh, shoot, one was a golden doodle, one was a long, black-haired dog. The fact that the lady would have had three dogs up there at once suggests to me the possibility it's a professional dog walker. But here's, here's the issues, so her dog got bit in the tail, except the report shows up on Concerned Citizens and no identification of who the other owner was, no real identification of the dogs, no clear identity whether they're from in town or out of town. It's possible the owner grabbed that dog and went running away faster than anybody could get them, but with the world of cell phones, if you're gonna have an altercation, you should expect the person that you're having that altercation with to provide you with information. If they refuse to, you should be able to at the very least take their picture and ideally get a picture of their license plate, cause if we have your responsible dog owners that are, you know, escaping and evading the damage they do, that's a little different set of circumstances. Even if we don't fix anything else, we can, I think, fix that, so, the, I'm sharing this so you know what people had to say. And it's, it's the classic dilemma of some people, you know, where do you draw the line between what is allowable incidents, especially between dogs, more so than, you know, where the, dogs can do that stuff. And a recognition that there are people on this thread that said, yeah, that's why I don't go up there anymore, so we're, we're in that dilemma where in the interest of allowing some dogs to have free range up at the state hospital, we are driving some residents of town off the property and that's the part that's bothering me all along. Don't have good answers for it, but this is part of that continuing conversation.
No, we should have a conversation, because I've actually continued to ask people, I actually bumped into two people that are husband and wife that, that walk dogs and I happened to pull them aside the week before the special town meeting and I, I saw them and they, one had five, one had five, I said, you guys, Miley Murphy, I'm Selectmen, I'm curious, and they, they were incredibly respectful. They said, you know what, we've never talked to Selectmen before, we appreciate the fact this is a friendly conversation, they, uh, they, they don't even go near the center of the north hill anymore because they said it's getting out of control, they, so I know Pete shared some information with me about how other towns are doing it and a group that had started to put some ideas together in Medfield. But I'd like to figure out how do we do, and Mark, I guess I'll look to you, and it's like baby steps, like, we should make it mandatory, if you're going to walk a dog at the state hospital, you must prove that you have a do, your dog is licensed, I don't care what town, but if your dog does not have a tag, you are not welcome up there. And it's not that we'll give a fee, that they can be walked off the property, cause that is town-owned private property. And then for every dog that's there, you should have a leash, which, um, this dog walking couple, so that's probably the biggest concern they have, which is why they stay away from the middle of the field, a professional dog walker will get out of the car. will get out of the car with two leashes, have five dogs, and then when you need to control them, you can't control them. So, so we need to figure out, how do we do this in a way that there's some teeth? Because we can talk all we want, and we can say that we're going to fine fifty dollars, we're going to find, if we know that no one's going to show up in court to collect that fee, that's a complete and utter waste of time to do it. But how do we do it? I mean, something that they had asked me, is I know that Jenny Cronin is our, our dog officer, and they said, "There are times of the day that it's just a given that that center of the field is an absolute disaster." So, can we do something that, maybe we might talk with Michelle, to say, "Can we just ask that Jenny kind of be assigned up there to start sending the message that..."
You can, but Jenny can't enforce that, because our bylaw, we did not pass a bylaw that says you have to be on the leash in the center of the State Hospital.
Okay, not even so much a leash, but you have to have a license, because that is, that's a law. In our town, if you don't have it by April first, you then get a higher fee, right? So, you can't have a dog without a li, a dog license. And we should be able to, to stipulate that if, if it, if it's not going to be on leash, you still have to have a leash to get it on leash, right? So, two simple hurdles to clear that start sending a message that we're, we, we need to start getting control of it. And then, you know, the one thing that they said, and this happens in a lot of the dog parks around here, is it's a lot of self-policing, where it's, it's, you know, you've got to be able to walk up to someone and say, "Hey, you, you can't let that happen." Or your dogs, you know, "We just had a dog bitten the tail last week. You've got to be able to get your dog under control. Otherwise, we are going to have to call and have you removed from the property," right? But it's, it's, I, everyone agrees, it's not an easy discussion, because we're not going to solve it overnight. Whoever, so, so if you have a dog and your dog's been bit, I know this for a fact, if you bring it to Medfield Vet, or, which is now at Benfield, they, the first thing they will ask when they see your dog with a puncture wound or any sort of, you don't have in a dog, "How did this happen? And what was the name of the other dog, a dog owner?" And if you can't give that, then your dog's immediately quarantined for forty-five days, which blows, right? And I didn't know that until my dog got bit the first time. But I happen to thank goodness know the people at the time walked up at Wheelock, and they were wildly responsible. Neither of us knew that he actually got a puncture, puncture wound, and they immediately said, you know, "Give us Jenny's name, we'll call her right away." But I think there's got to be some education, like, if that happened up at the State Hospital, and like, my dog was bit again, I, I would know immediately, "I don't want my dog tied up for forty-five days, so I'm going to make sure I get your name and number."
Well, I think that's a basic rule, anytime you have a dog. I mean, that's a big history.
But it sounds like I haven't read this.
It's not actionable. You know, the dog got bit, but there's no identification who the dog, you know, would not find the person who owned the dog that did the biting.
So, again, I haven't read this, because it's quite a few pages, I will read it tonight. It, I think it's going to be more of, dog walkers are going to have to start communicating with one another to say if, well, if in that scenario...
We've been saying that for five years.
Well, no, but, well, okay, but, but now we've sold the property, and it's about to change, right? But I'm going to let you...
Again, Eve Pot. I'm thoroughly confused. I've, usually, about once a week, I walk at the hospital. I don't have a dog. I walk with my daughter. We, neither one of us have dogs, but we thoroughly enjoy it and walk around. Now, I've seen signs where it says, "In the center, you should have, you have to have your dog leashed," and that, "Over to the left, the open park, you can go without a leash," okay? Now, is that correct? Now, from what you said, that they can enforce it, or what's, what is the story?
So, our bylaw says that as long as your dog is under voice command. So, we put the signs up, right. So, we put the signs up at the State Hospital, encouraging people to have their dogs leashed in that center area, where we know we have a lot more walkers. But the problem is, we can't enforce somebody or give them a penalty for not having their dog on their leash in that area.
Because during the weekend, there's, I saw, I looked around, and I said, "I saw that sign up, but no one has their dog on the leash on the weekends." I mean, I'm making a generalization.
We saw it, we were up there last Saturday.
I'm making a generalization, but again, I was shocked, and I thought, "Oh, there's a sign," and no one seemed to be going by it.
What prompted that sign about a year ago was an email, I think we may have all got it, but I certainly got it, and it was from a woman, I don't know, I forget, I forget her name, you might even know her, but there's a group of women who sound like they're probably in their seventies, I think it was like five of them, that liked to walk in the quad.
Oh, I know, they're from Sherbrooke.
Okay, maybe. Oh, geez, shouldn't have worried about it.
[laughing]
No, but what, what the message that came in is, we were walking in the quad, a dog, and it was actually a friend, it wasn't a dog attack, it was like, I think, a young dog came running up from behind the women, playful, and jumped up on one of the women and knocked her to the concrete, but she didn't know she was about to get hit with this reasonably good-sized dog, who was just being friendly. But bottom line was, it knocked him down. So, we put the signs up saying that you have to have a leash inside the quad. Christine, I'll, I'll take issue saying, "Well, we put it up there, we can't do anything about it," because that's not the message I think we want to send out to people. I can tell you, on Saturdays, when CAM has an event, I haven't seen too many people, I've seen one person when I was there that had a dog without a leash, but I haven't seen people argue, saying, "You can't make me put my dog on a leash when the place is full." Everybody seems to know what to do.
Yes.
When there's a lot of people there, and there's a lot going on. So, the hope was, by putting that that says, "If you're in the quad, you have to be on a leash, that way you don't have dogs that will bound around and knock people to the ground, and you've got all this other space that you can use."
It's beautiful.
And I had checked the lady that contacted me. I said, "I'm trying to figure out what to do here." I said, "Well, you know, if you walk in the quad, what if we said, 'You have to be on a leash in the quad, but they can run free,' you know, are there, you know, would that work?" So, I like to walk on all the trails, and it's like, you know, I don't know how to fix that exactly, unless we just make everything leash-only.
But changing bylaws is that impossible?
No, that, and then we had talked about doing that for this year's town meeting, but we asked for more time to review the situation.
We didn't, we didn't have unanimity on this board about what we needed to do in time to have a bylaw change for this town meeting.
Because it's confusing, you know, when you see that.
Well, it's, it's funny, when Mike Marcucci, when I was sitting out there back in probably January, February timeframe, and came up, and Mike was the person that said, "We put them up, but there's really no, there's no teeth behind it." But I then looked at our charter, our charter has fines. If you go into the Medfield, and I printed it out one time for one of our meetings, where you can get fined twenty-five, you can get fined fifty, why do we have it if we can't enforce it? I mean, it's there, and if you look up Medfield Dog...
Out of a process. Unfortunately, ultimately, it's not self-enforcing. In the legislature, it's their fault. As late as the Municipal Modernization Act in 2016, Department of Revenue had a whole list of statutes that were being modernized and, and updated, and one of them was the lean statute to include local fines. And the legislature, in their wisdom, stripped it out. So, right now, your only alternative is if they won't pay it voluntarily, you have to go to court, the district court, and go through that process.
So, hence why Jenny's not going to write something up, because it's just a waste of paper, because we're not going to send something...
Unfortunately, the courts across the boards, they don't care whether it's dogs, they don't care if it's wetlands, they don't care what it is, they really can't get excited about enforcing local bylaws. It just, that's the way it is.
So, in that situation, the only way we would be able to enforce something up there is if somebody's in violation of one of our rules, we could have them escorted off the property.
I think we need, we need to...
Let me, let's just say, there's a, there's a broad range of statutory authorization to deal with dogs once something happens. Unfortunately, trying to be proactive and prevent something from happening, not so much. And somebody alluded to it, I don't know if it was you, Eileen, or you, Gus, but frankly, the communities that have set up dog parks have set up committees to run the dog parks, and yes, they police it themselves in terms of particularly requiring rabies tags, which is more important, frankly, the licensing's just a mechanism to get the rabies tag. So, you have to have a current rabies tag, and if there's any kind of violation or breach, you're basically just booted from the, from the dog park. So...
When I lived in Boston, I stole my dogs, called them to get the rabies tag. And to get that, they, they took the dog off the leash, and I couldn't find the dog for about three hours.
So, there are some people that have come in this thread here, have commented that if we had dog parks, that would be great. I am skeptical, because some people think it would be great to have a dog park down at Wheelock, and some people think it would be great to have a dog park up at the State Hospital. And my guess is that what people really want is two dog parks, one at the, at Wheelock, which is school grounds, which probably, there's no, if I were around the school, I really wouldn't want to put, set up a dog park there. And if we do, if we were to do a dog park here, I sit there and say, "So, what big a dog park are we talking about? Is the North Field going to be the dog park where there's this huge fence around this free-range running area?" You know, to try to choose a place that's a town-wide dog park in this town, I mean, I understand why that's what we, what they have in Newton, but I don't think that, you know, I'm not, I don't see the picture of how that makes a lot of sense. It's going to make a lot of dog owners happy here in Medfield, so I'm skeptical of that. There is one point that, if you've been watching the information sessions or even the town meeting, the questions that have come to Trinity is, are, is, so is, when you finish the development, is this going to continue to be open to the public? And they've been very, not, I won't want to say cagey, because it's not sneaky cagey, but they've been very cagey in their answer. They said, "Absolutely, it will be open to the public, and we would expect people to be respectful of how they use it, just like they would any other neighborhood in this town."
Mm-hmm.
So, for those who are worried about free-range dogs in the middle of the quad, once this project is done...
Not going to happen.
Not any more than you're going to see free-range dogs over at Turtle Brook, or, you know, or somewhere else. That's going to solve itself in about two years, right inside the quad. We still have the issue, you know, Bill's talked about him and his neighbors, and we talked with the people that came and talked to us at the end of Evergreen about the access point, saying, you know, "I've looked out, our Long Matter, I've looked out my back door, and I have six strange dogs in my backyard who hopped over the wall from the State Hospital, and now they're in my yard. And I don't, I'm not even sure if I should go out." So, we still have a dog control issue, even if a good part of the open space is left open for dogs.
So, I think it's, I think it's an issue. I think that, that the town should be looking at it. How we look at it, I guess, is what we need to figure out and decide. I had, what I had shared with Eileen was a, an actual suggested new dog ordinance, bylaw, for, for the town that John Thompson had some committee that, that he had been on several years ago drafted. Have you seen that?
Yeah, I think you've brought it, you have.
So, that, I think that we just need to, we need to...
So, the time would be now to set up a committee for next year's annual meeting, because it's going to take that kind of time?
Yeah.
And what happened in the past, it actually goes back to Carol Mayer, who just thought there needed to be an updated bylaw, overall bylaw. I know John Thompson had particular issues related to the hospital. She got a bylaw from another municipality. I think it was Newton.
That's what John used, was the Newton one.
Ironically, Newton got it from Franklin, because I drafted it in Franklin, and it circulated.
So, it's your bylaw.
Ultimately, they were, this committee was tweaking it, tweaking it, and they, and I offered to meet with them without success. They were not making progress. We were coming to the fact that we needed, I, I was much more concerned about the serious issue of vicious dogs. We've had several hearings over the years, and I wanted to make sure that we were fully, had all the options available to us if that happened, you know, a deliberate dog attack. And so, I, I had my own reasons, that I felt we had a very deficient bylaw. We needed to get a comprehensive one in place that dealt with, it's, it breaks it down, vicious dogs, and I forget the other ones, it's basically noisy. So, that covered all that. And the premise that I approached that bylaw was, being kind of a dog person myself, we need to make it very expensive for irresponsible dog owners, and that's the way that bylaw is drafted. So, anyway, when, when that committee didn't come forward with a draft for an, for a town meeting article, I took the liberty of revising mine from Franklin, which had come through Newton, so it was substantial, it was a same bylaw, for my purposes, and it passed. We left the leash part alone, because historically, we knew that was going to be highly controversial.
So, maybe, maybe we've dissolved several committees tonight, and we could look in the near future at creating a committee. And I, I think it's got to be a committee that's got, again, it's, it's collaborative people. We, we need to hear the voice of the dog owners.
Absolutely. Dog walkers.
We need to hear the, the voice of the people who are not dog walkers, who don't necessarily hate dogs, just don't really want to have to deal with everybody's dogs and, and see if we can't get to a resolution.
The trustees of the reservation went through this twenty years ago at Rocky Woods, and came up with a plan. I don't know exactly what it is, but I think there are areas where you're on leash and off leash, and so we should, whoever looks at it should look at that plan.
The other aspect, if you're a dog person, it's not just walking them, there are certain breeds, most breeds, frankly, they just want to run, take them off, and the dogs just take off and just run crazy until they exhaust themselves.
Right.
So, they want somewhere that they can do that, too, and whether you agree that that is acceptable or not, is something that has to be addressed as well.
I just wanted to say, there, there were a couple of opportunities where a draft made its way onto the proposed warrant, but it seemed that there were more important things, like the school, and like the hospital, and, you know, so, you know, it suffered. I mean, there was enough to, there was enough to talk about with the, the main issue for the town meeting, and I think we've all recognized that it probably would be a two-night meeting by the time you heard everybody who had to speak for or against it. But I mentioned before, the self-policing may work in a crowd when you have like a CAM event and everything else. It doesn't work very well when it's a woman walking a dog and a guy walking his dog, and there's an issue. Because I reported on this before, there was a woman on the, on the old Building and Grounds Committee who, who challenged an unruly dog owner, and basically, he came up and in her face intimidated her pretty much, you know, stopped her from even going up there. And so, you...
Right.
It, it's hard to expect the average citizen to face down somebody who challenges their being challenged. So, I mean, you need to...
It's even harder when these people that are, that may be doing that don't even live in Medfield, right? I mean, that's, that's the hard part.
Well, I, I've got photos, I mean, I stopped taking them, of, of vans with, you know, signs on the, on the, you know, you know, doggie adventures and, and things along that line. And I, and I mentioned before, you know, my understanding of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, I mean, they have a three-dog limit on their property, and here we are, abutting the property and encouraging professional dog walkers to take five, six dogs, you know.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I, that's where I like what Pete shared. It had, it had, and Mark, I'll love to look at yours, because if, we should be limiting it. And then the couple that lived in Medfield, they said, you know, they, they, they would say five per person max, right? And so, if the husband and wife, we've got ten, but they literally had all their, they, they were staying away from the chaos, because they knew what could occur. But, but I think it's safe to say that'll be on the 2023 warrant, and it'll give us ample time to start getting discussions going, get a committee together.
Get a committee started now, yeah.
Yeah. And, and we've got to do something that we can actually act on. If it becomes something that, you know, Jenny's like, "Well, it's great, but I can't do it," like, then we're wasting everyone's time. Like, that's what's frustrating.
Well, see, the complicating thing is, you have the ability to prohibit it. Park and Rec prohibits it on their property. The Cemetery Commission's, I don't know how they ultimately resolved it, but they were wrestling with the issue because of dogs being walked over here.
I'm the, I'm the, I'm the one that forced that issue, so.
So, properties that's under specific hearsay and control, the boards that, that have control of that have that as an option. The difficulty becomes, if you want to find a middle ground.
Right.
So, you, you have a dog walk across the, the La Crosse Field on, on Metacomet Park. What recourse does Park and Rec have? If you're saying the same thing, that they can give you a fifty-dollar ticket, but no one's going to go chase you for it?
At one point, the chair of Park and Rec himself was going around conducting...
But, but he can, right? I mean, it, but as, but if you, you, you have to, if it's a ticket, who's collecting that money?
Well, there's also the issue, if you're violating a town bylaw, and, and it's significant, and, and the police are called, they can basically say, "You're violating the town bylaw, you got to stop." Now, if you push back, now you've just elevated it to failing to follow a police officer's instructions, so...
Because that's one thing, I mean, that we can't, I, I would like to think that the State Hospital ground, which has significantly more dogs, we should have more teeth. Because I, it's funny, I won't get into my Metacomet, my Metacomet scenario, but the, the number of dogs that end up walking across the La Crosse Field, that are slim to none, right? The number that are up at the State Hospital, if we can, if we can address what's going on at Metacomet, we absolutely should be able to address what's going on at the State Hospital. That should be...
The woman that I was walking, she had, I can't believe it, she had seven dogs, creepy, huge dogs, little dogs...
huge dogs, little dogs, just, just, just like you said. And she told me, I said, oh, are you from Medfield? Oh, no. She said, but I come here because there are very few places that allow us. And this is what she was saying. She said, oh, no, we come from all over to go to Medfield because we're the only ones. And they had all these dogs, they were very well behaved, but it was a large number. It was amazing to see them all.
Yeah, that, that may be putting a limit on how many dogs people can have there is one way to control it. When we talked before about the quad, I had kind of concluded that because the enforcement and the fines and the rules don't work, that the best strategy I came, I could come up with was accountability. And so there's two kinds of accountability. One is mandatory incident reporting, where you have to, if, if either people, you know, if either party to an incident says, I want this reported, both parties have to share all their information and all that. And then Pete, you were the one that talked about the red, kind of the registration like what they do up at Rocky Woods, where if you force owners, if you want to use the property, you literally have to, it doesn't, we could or don't have to charge for it. You have to register your dog. So we know who you are, we know where you live, we have a picture of your dog, we have a picture of your dog's license. Then suddenly, people who have dogs will sense that they are going to be held more directly accountable. And it's possible that it, then self policing perhaps does work because all of a sudden it's, you know, I recognize that there's a accountability loop here.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that at all.
That, that may be as good a way, but I actually think if we're attracting professional dog walkers with large numbers of dogs from the entire region, A, I'm pretty sure they're not cleaning up when they go down the trails.
Not if you have seven dogs.
Yeah, and, and all off leash. And B, it's not that I, you know, I don't, I'm not a big fan of preventing people from earning a living, but I don't think we bought the state hospital in order to enable the state's dog walking industry, you know, indiscriminately, so. And I, and I say that at the same time, I'm also very mindful of like the groups like VisWiz here in town that are, if there's a group of responsible owners who, who run events, I was asking a lady, we were out a couple of weeks ago, they had a Visla, and I said, gee, are you part of VisWiz? And she said, oh, no, I sometimes am there with, but they come in really early in the morning. So they actually are avoiding the crowds, I guess. That explains why I haven't seen them so long. They're really nice dogs, they're very responsible owners, they tend not to be, they're not in the quad, they're, they go out on the north field. And so we do have some larger groups, but those aren't, anybody bringing 10 dogs in, those are 10 people bringing one or two dogs in, so.
You know, you should, I, I appreciate your comments about what's going to happen after Trinity gets there. I mean, the, the behavior will have to be worked out over time, their residents will have a say, they will have a say. But there are portions of the property that weren't sold to Trinity, those are, it's town owned property. You're going to have that issue to face for yourselves and decide what the town needs to do here, because Trinity will work out their issues.
Yep.
You're still going to have yours. You're going to have the Arboretum, you're going to have the green, you're going to have the north field.
Right.
You've got across the street, you've got all the parcel B across the street as well. So you, whatever you come up with, you're not going to be off the hook for it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I'm thinking, the place I've been most concerned about is inside the quad with people who would like to just be able to walk.
That will work out.
Yeah, I think that'll work. But you're absolutely right, Bill. And then, I mean, your issues, even if we got the Arboretum and the green and the north field itself figured out, that still doesn't resolve some of the issues you and your neighbors have experienced with people taking the trails off of those, that property and going onto the Dover Shoremore property.
Getting lost, you can't get back over the walls.
Right.
Try to walk up and down that side of the wall for two hours.
Right. So anyway, my point in doing this was not to push for a resolution tonight, but we said we were going to have an ongoing conversation. This was an important part of that conversation, so. And it sounds like we want a committee, which I think would make sense.
Do you know if the John Thompson in the sheets you gave us is the John Thompson who's on the building and grounds committee up there or the other John Thompson?
Um, I think this is the John Thompson at the hospital.
It's our John Thompson.
Yeah.
Sounded like it.
Yeah. If I, if I'd looked bigger at the picture, I know that, I know how to tell the difference from the picture they have on Facebook. So anyway, okay, we beat that to death.
No, this is not about dogs.
Ah, sorry, citizen comment is over.
No, this isn't a citizen comment, this is just a comment about the Peak House being a museum. Laurel Scotty, and this is regarding, regarding the Dwight Derby House, the Dwight Derby House is a museum. And if you haven't visited it lately, please do so. It tells its story of how, how that house came, it tells its own story just walking through it. And it's, you can see the glazier actually signed the window pane, you see the original rooms. It's staged as a transition house from, as it's the only home that's been lived in continuously for 300 years in this country. So please do come, it is a museum and the troop, troop, Boy Scout Troop 89 has been doing an archaeological dig with the last pile of dirt that was from the excavation of the annex connecting the house and the barn. They have found artifacts, John Thompson has been over there and showed them how to separate the artifacts and describe them. They found a pipe piece from the 1600s, nails from the 1600s. And last week, Troop 89, it looks like they found an inkwell.
Oh, wow.
So please do pay a visit if you have it.
Do they have the, I, I don't know if it's the seventh or eighth graders that do the bike tour to all the historical sites, did they do that again this year? Did they get a chance?
I don't know.
They did.
I, we haven't.
They did?
We, we weren't contacted about that.
Does the Dwight Derby House have regular open hours?
Yes, during the, from March to December, we're generally open the first and third Saturdays of the month from 10 to 12 to match those of the Historical Society. For the summer, we're only open the first Saturday of the month from 10 to 12. So we will be open next Saturday.
And we have docents doing it.
No, this, this, wait, what, it'll, will it be this Saturday?
Are they skipping 4th of July weekend and doing the next one?
No, we're going to be open July 2nd.